It's kind of sports tonight.
It is, yeah.
I know Rod's here.
Rod's there. I saw Paul come in.
Oh, yes.
He's walked in together.
Okay.
So, and Michael is...
Last thing.
Uh, last thing.
There it is.
Hello.
Hi, Molly. How you doing? Who?
David.
Well, never left it, unfortunately. Yeah, just complicated it, so. Pain in the neck. No, type it. Type it like constituents. How dare you? No. Type it like constituents. And then it just sees double.
Are you right here?
Oh, that's right.
To the grip.
That's right.
Michael, are you right here?
Yes. Yeah, and I'm sitting on the left side of the flight deck, so all the switches are on the right-hand side. Yeah, I tried it.
Have you figured out what the change is?
I didn't.
Must have been something on it. I sure can't see where it is.
John, when you get started, would you do a sound check for those who are back here? Make sure they can hear this.
Sure.
I'd like to do that every meeting, so they just can't hear in the back, though. We're happy with the meeting. Somebody makes a call again, then we start speaking.
Oh, you did? Did you enjoy it?
Well, actually, it wasn't bad at all.
I've taken the bus a couple of times.
Yeah, we went and took it. Yeah, I've done both things.
But we passed yours in the shuttle. Yeah, the shuttle.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is seven o'clock PM. This is our regular scheduled meeting. I just real quick want to do a sound check. Can you hear back there? Do I need to turn up the sound? All right, good deal. All right, will you stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilmember Costin.
Present.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel.
Here.
Councilmember Delivar.
Present.
Councilmember Greenlee.
Here.
Councilmember Morris.
Here.
And Mayor Protem Russell.
Here.
Now, it's time in the agenda for public comments. We ask that everyone keep their comments to three minutes and keep it germane to any kind of issues directed at the city. So, this is time for public comment.
Good evening. Chuck Miller, 25810 Northeast 12th Street, Camas, Washington, representing Washington Citizens for Responsible Government. We would like to thank the leadership of the Washougal City Council members in passing the resolution supporting the Arizona law, Senate Bill 1070, which represents the rule of law and our constitution. In great appreciation, we thank council members Dave Shoemaker, Jennifer McDaniel, Michael Delivar, Rod Morris, and John Russell for supporting states' rights in dealing with our federal government that refuses to do their job in protecting American citizens by securing our borders. In the last five years, Missouri, Virginia, and Rhode Island have already enacted an immigration law similar to Arizona. So far, nine other states are supporting Arizona's immigration law by joining the fight against the Department of Justice lawsuit. Those states are Alabama, Michigan, Nebraska, Pennsylvania, South Carolina, South Dakota, Texas, Virginia, and the territory of the Mariana Islands. Florida and Utah are also lining up to pass a similar law. More good news for the American citizens. The Landmark Legal Foundation has filed a detailed friend of the court brief in support of the Arizona law, and it's recently enacted law requiring suspected illegal aliens to produce proof of their legal immigration status in a court. We all know what goes on in Arizona affects all of America, including Washougal, Washington, and we hope our Washington state reps and senators will take heed in getting a similar law passed. Thank you for your time. Freedom of speech is a precious gift that should never be hampered. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Richard Hamby, 37015 Southeast Gibson Road, Washougal. I grew up in Washougal, but I have lived outside the city limits since after high school, so I don't often attend your meetings, although everything that you do affects Washougal affects me. I did attend your July 19th meeting and asked during the public hearing for your transportation improvement plan that you work with the Port of Camas-Washougal and State Department of Transportation to develop a plan to upgrade Highway 14 through Washougal that could be supported by your three entities. If you work together on an agreed-to plan, you increase our chances for funding when it becomes available. I also attended the August 2nd meeting and was pleased to see two port commissioners in attendance. Commissioner Lampton spoke, calling for cooperation between the port and the city regarding improvements for Highway 14 through Washougal. This is an obvious issue that our local government entities should work on together for the benefit of everyone, but you don't seem to be able to even work together with yourselves. Your action, a vote to remove the placeholder for highway improvements from the wash dot Q, ignored the advice of your staff, the requests for cooperation toward progress from me and Commissioner Lampton, and the plea from the mayor to give him a year to search for an alternative. No one was calling for the construction of roundabouts. No one believes that anything will move forward in the next year. It was painfully obvious to all that were paying attention, and I assume that includes all of you, that the issue was not roundabouts or no roundabouts. The vote by the majority of this council seemed to be designed only to allow the false claim to be made that "I vote against roundabouts on Highway 14." To wash dot, it will be seen as saying, "Take us off your list while we argue amongst ourselves." In recent years, Washougal's government has gained a reputation for not following through on decisions and agreements. This will be seen as more of the same. It's not good for Washougal. Your vote was described by a member of the council as only setting us back a few years. I guess you think it's worth it to make some pointless point. You might look at this differently after the first phase of highway improvements is completed. Eastbound traffic will flow unimpeded until the traffic light at 15th Street. Then the big backups and the rear-end accidents currently occurring at Union Street will happen here. We will all experience this for a few more years, and I will remember this vote. I can only assume from the casual way you delay progress toward highway improvements that you have not known anyone who has died at one of these intersections on Highway 14. Those of us that have understand the importance of moving forward on improving this key piece of our city's infrastructure as we continue to become a larger community. Will any deaths or serious injuries during the few extra years we have to wait be on your conscience?
Thank you, Mr. Hamby.
Just three minutes.
Right with the time, huh?
Yeah. Sorry, I'm holding everyone to the same standard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Don Bowlen. I live at 32934 Southeast 20th Street, and I wanted to talk, address the council tonight. I feel the council's not really working as a team. I've been thinking about it, and I thought, deja vu. I was managing in a group once, and I thought that group used to lay awake nights figuring out it could make my life miserable. But generally, employees or people aren't that way. They really want to do a good job. They want to be proud of what they do. And the council is no different than that, so I said, "Okay, now if you're critical, what's the answer?" So, I called City Hall. And as you know, you do have an oath of office. You have a mission statement, but I said, "Do you have a mission statement of what the council is supposed to do?" And they said, "No." And by the way, in my last job, that turned things around, because once we had decided what our mission was, then there wasn't a lot of discussion or whatever you want to call it, bickering behind the scenes. We ended up focusing on real problems. And so, one of the things, another idea, I think you really need to take the time to agree what your mission statement is. And I understand the problem. You're all in a bus going 60 miles an hour, and I'm saying, "You got a flat tire. Stop the bus and change it." Nobody wants to do that, but I suspect that for things really to go better, eventually, you're going to have to do that. And I do have some suggestions. You folks are elected officials. You represent the people, and I think that's where it has to start. I'm not sure how much you represent builders, commercial enterprise, other government agencies, but I do know you should represent your constituents, which are the people. I guess the other thing is, and I don't have any trouble with a person, if they believe what the people are saying is wrong, to take a stand and vote their, what they think is better. My only suggestion is, when you do that, you better do it openly, and you better have the facts as to why your opinion is better than the people you are representing. That's it. I do have one other point I was going to make, is you're looking at a planning grant here that you want to release. And here again, on representing the people, I would...
It's time, Mr. Bowlen. Thank you.
Martha Martin, Washougal, same address as Richard Hamby. And I'd like to finish what Richard Hamby was reading, because I'm a faster reader. Three more paragraphs. Instead of working on things that will make a difference to our community, you waste your time and attention on national issues. I am not here to offer my opinion on the immigration issue or whether it should be an allowable issue for council action. I do want to question how you prioritize your efforts as elected officials. For too long, news coverage of Washougal's government has been an embarrassment. This issue has been no different, if only because it publicizes our dysfunctional council and its inability to focus on issues important to Washougal. It is time for you to stay out of the news and get down to the business of our city. The Port of Camas-Washougal has put their problems behind them. They are this year's winner of the year's most improved award for Clark County governments. You haven't even decided to compete. I am very proud of the town I grew up in. This is a great place to live. I would like to be as proud of our city's government. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Alena Cocteau, 1906 Southeast 331st Avenue, and I have a very short comment, and that is that the stimulus money really is not a money that is there. Any dollars that are stimulus that everybody seems to want and do things with, sometimes unnecessary things, it's all borrowed money. And so, what we're doing is unsustainable. And I know that unsustainable is a very popular word these days, okay? So, when you're deciding on all these things, because the stimulus money is going to pay for it, I think that we need to think about the children's future, because we'll be paying for this, and they will be paying for it, and it may be that the whole thing will just collapse, because we cannot go on borrowing. You can live like that, your life. If you don't have money, you just don't do things. At least, that's how we do things. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Milan Cocteau, and I live on 1906 Southeast Avenue. And I would like to continue a little bit from what Don Bowlen said about this planning grant. Looking at it, it has a lot of buzzwords, sustainable and regional planning grant. It seems to me like somebody is trying to waste money, because sustainable, if the money is coming from above, and it's coming from some stimulus, sustainable means, every fisherman will tell you, if you overfish, you will kill the fishery. If you overtax, you will kill the economy. So, we should restrain ourselves from wasting money which comes from the federal government, because after all, it's all our money. That's all I want to say.
Anyone else wishing to address the council?
Mr. Mayor Protem, could I ask that the speakers that speak from the public at least tell us what city they live in?
Oh, yes. Just those who maybe didn't mention their cities, can you, for the record, just mention what city you're from?
Well, it's on the 20th Street. It's on the borderline of Washougal.
Okay, thank you.
1931st is coming off the 20th.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
No, I think that's it.
Did Mr. Bowlen give his address?
Oh, 329. I live outside the city, same place.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along, seeing no other comments. I will close down the public comment section. Moving on to number five, the consent agenda. Consent agenda, number, the item number one is retreat minutes from July 31st, 2010. Number two is the council minutes from August 2nd, 2010. Number three is the workshop minutes from August 9th, 2010. And number four is the regular AP claims of $178,597.95. Checks numbers, 53714-53803.
Mr. Mayor, I'm Mr. Mayor Protem. My request that we pull the August 2nd minutes under new business for slight correction.
With that, with that change, Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that the remaining three items on the consent agenda be approved.
Mr. Mayor, do we need to make sure that the August 9th minutes were revised? Do we have to reference that in the motion?
Were those the ones you were referring to, the revised ones?
No, the second. The second. I didn't touch the ninth, but...
Because they were revised, I'm just curious if they need to be addressed that way in the...
I think they're issued revised. I don't know if they need to be. So moved on the consent agenda. Mayor's report, is there anything that the mayor left staff with?
Not that I have, no.
Okay. Let's go on to correspondence. I have one correspondence here from Mr. Hal Washburn, and I'd just like to enter it into the minutes. I'm not going to read it, so make sure it's part of the minutes for next meeting. Any other correspondence from staff? Council comments? Start with whoever wants to go.
Sorry. The letter from Hal Washburn, will that be sent to all of council? Was it addressed to the city only, or?
It is addressed to the council. Yes.
Will council be receiving a copy?
Yes, I would think so.
I'm sorry, I was asking if, can you hear me now? Okay, great. I was asking if council will receive a copy of Mr. Washburn's correspondence comments?
Yes, staff, will you make sure that this ends up in their box? I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yes, Councilman Shoemaker?
Yes, I would just like to say, on Saturday, we had a great turnout for the pedestrian tunnel opening. It was heartening to see in that heat so many people who came out to just kind of celebrate with all of us. It's been a long process, and it was a good event. I think it bodes well for Washougal. We do have a new restaurant in downtown Washougal that has had a soft opening, and I believe their official grand opening is the 18th, which is this week. And so, I would encourage all of you to try out the new Hearth Restaurant in Washougal Town Square. So, I guess that's about it. It's a good event.
Councilman Shoemaker?
Thank you. A lot has been made in discussion in these chambers and in local newspapers about whether or not the council's resolution on SB 1070 from Arizona was meaningful in the context of Washougal. Anything that has consequences on Washougal is meaningful in our context. I noticed a Sunday, or a Saturday paper article in The Columbian, and it says that three states, Washington, New Mexico, and Utah, allow illegal immigrants to get licenses because their laws do not require proof of citizenship or legal residency. It also notes that these states have seen a surge in immigrants seeking IDs in recent months, a trend experts attribute to crackdowns on illegal immigration in Arizona and elsewhere. So, it appears that actions have consequences, and Arizona has taken an action which has foisted consequences on these other states, and we're one of them. It also appears that lack of action has consequences. We're one of three states that allows this sort of thing, and we are getting more and more illegal immigrants up here. And they're so brave as to give interviews to the newspaper, complete with photographs, about how difficult it is to be an illegal in this country today. I am amazed, but my point, my main point is, our resolution was germane. It was important to Washougal, and that's why we did it. The second thing, we've been talking about the country's debt, and here again, the issue is whether or not this is germane to our discussions here. President Obama's debt commission consists of two chairmen. One's Republican, one's a Democrat, and I'd like to just quote for you what the Democrats said recently. It's a fellow by the name of Erskine Bowles, who's been around a long time. If I remember correctly, he was part of either the Kennedy or the Carter administration. He said that he gave an ominous assessment of the nation's fiscal future here Sunday, calling current budgetary trends a cancer that will destroy the country from within unless checked by tough action in Washington. Haven't seen much of that lately coming out of Washington. Erskine Bowles also said that unlike the current economic crisis, which was largely unforeseen before it hit in fall 2008, the coming fiscal calamity is staring the country in the face. This one is clear as a bell. Both commission leaders, Republican and Democrat, said that at present, federal revenue is fully consumed by three programs, Social Security, Medicaid, and Medicare. Everything else, including fighting two wars, homeland security, education, veterans, art, culture, and anything else you can name, is being funded by China and other countries. We're borrowing that money every year. They also said, "We can't grow our way out of this, and we can't tax our way out of this." And they pointed to a recent development in Britain where a new coalition government there is taking steps to solve the same problem. They've had this problem for years, and they're suggesting that about three-quarters of the deficit reduction would be accomplished through spending cuts, and the remainder through additional revenue. Three to one. And I guess my question would be, have we reached the point where we look to socialist Britain for leadership on our finances? I'd like to think that at the local level, we don't do that. And Mrs. Kopka, your point on stimulus money is extremely well-taken. I think we should resist that for two reasons. One, you mentioned. It's funny money. It's debt. We don't need to incur any more. The other one is that I want to maintain control of our destiny, and it would not surprise me to see the Obama administration call in loans that they have made for political reasons or for economic reasons. I don't want this city to be in that position. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protem?
Is there anyone else on this side before we move back over here? Go ahead, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. With regards, we heard some very serious and well-measured comments tonight from the public with regards to the functionality of the council, and I wanted to give just a very short snippet of my, some thoughts that I have regarding that. I can understand that a lot of the discussions we've been having in the last year have been out of the ordinary for what's normal for City Hall and out of the ordinary perhaps for Washougal politics. This might, I mean, this change may be permanent. It may not. It all depends on the issues that come before the council and how we handle our budget, et cetera. One thing I would ask is, in the future, please do give us your thoughts directly via email and phone calls and whatnot. I think that that could also be very helpful as well, and it'll also give us an opportunity perhaps to delve deeper into specific issues if that, as they come up. Of course, the public forum here is perfectly acceptable as well. But one question that I would like to address to the public and solicit your feedback, this is just me speaking on my own behalf, is with regards to the budget discussions, because as we go into our budget discussions in the next few months, we're going to have to make a lot of very important decisions. Of course, on the national scene, we've got more of a constricting budget cycle going on. We have less money that's going to be flowing one direction or another, less assumptions of future money coming in, and that has consequences down the line with regards to how much we can fund our own city with all the different programs. And one thing that I would request is, if you have ideas or suggestions about how you would recommend that we represent you in the budget discussions, please send them along. I do that in all seriousness, and I look forward to your comments, and I'll yield the floor.
Great. I'd also like to kind of second what Molly had said in regards to the pedestrian tunnel. Though I have disagreed with how the tunnel was funded and was put in in that regard, the fact is that the tunnel's there, and you worked very hard on that project, and I did want to give you recognition for your work on that tunnel and the things that you put into it. So, I do want you to know that that has not gone unseen. Also, too, I think you would, as the, being with the legal wing voters, you would also join me in reminding people to turn in their ballots tomorrow for the primary election. Yeah. And I think that that's all I have. Is there anything else? The council members? Okay. Amendments to the agenda? Okay. New and old business here. Agenda Bill 118-10, SPSA, number one, Wallace Engineering, General Engineering Services.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Russell. Councilmembers, staff is submitting a supplemental professional service agreement, number one, with Wallace for additional general engineering...
I can understand that a lot of the discussions we've been having in the last year have been out of the ordinary for what's normal for City Hall, and out of the ordinary perhaps for Waschuggal politics. This might, I mean, this change may be permanent, it may not. It all depends on the issues that come before the council, and how we handle our budget, et cetera. One thing I would ask is, in the future, please do give us your thoughts directly via email and phone calls and whatnot. I think that that could also be very helpful as well, and it'll also give us an opportunity, perhaps, to delve deeper into specific issues if that, as they come up. Of course, the public forum here is perfectly acceptable as well. But one question that I would like to address to the public and solicit your feedback, this is just me speaking on my own behalf, is with regards to the budget discussions. Because as we go into our budget discussions the next few months, we're going to have to make a lot of very important decisions. Of course, on the national scene, we've got more of a constricting budget cycle going on. We have less money that's going to be flowing one direction or another, less assumptions of future money coming in, and that has consequences down the line with regards to how much we can fund our own city with all the different programs. And one thing that I would request is, if you have ideas or suggestions about how you would recommend that we represent you in the budget discussions, please send them along. I do that in all seriousness, and I look forward to your comments, and I'll yield the floor.
Great. I'd also like to kind of second what Molly had said in regards to pedestrian tunnel. Though I have disagreed with how the tunnel was funded and was put in in that regard. The fact is that the tunnel's there, and you worked very hard on that project, and I did want to give you recognition for your work on that tunnel and the things that you put into it. So I do want you to know that that has not gone unseen.
Thank you.
Also too, I think you would, as the, being with the legal women voters, you would also join me in reminding people to turn in their ballots tomorrow for the primary election.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And I think that that's all I have. Is there anything else? The council members? Okay. Amendments to the agenda? New and old business here. Agenda Bill 118-10, SPSA, number one, Wallace Engineering, General Engineering Services.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Russell, council members. Staff is submitting a supplemental professional service agreement, number one, with Wallace for additional general engineering services. The supplemental is being submitted to expand the existing professional service agreement to include engineering design and report preparation regarding the addition of a full waterline replacement in regards to the E Street project. These tasks will include modifying to 95, then ultimately 100% plans. The recommended action this evening authorized the mayor to sign the Wallace Engineering Supplemental Professional Service Agreement, the General Services, or General Engineering Services PSA.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the Wallace Engineering Supplemental Professional Services Agreement for the General Engineering Services PSA.
Second.
So we have a vote on the table to accept the Wallace Engineering General Engineering Services Agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Bill 119-10, PSA, Michael Ilya, Engineering and Design of Pedestrian Bridge.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Staff is submitting a professional service agreement for Michael Ilya, engineer for the engineering and design of a pedestrian bridge across Campin Creek and Doc Eldridge Park. The scope will include structural calculations and design of the bridge, including abutments and guardrails, and construction drawings of the same. The recommended action this evening authorized the mayor to sign the Michael Ilya Professional Service Agreement for the pedestrian bridge across Campin Creek and Doc Eldridge Park. Staff also routed and included in the packet additional information stemming from questions from workshop on specific location, even though it alluded to a blue circle. It is the circle on the overhead map, as well as some clarification on materials, local contractors, and exactly what the scope is Mr. Ilya will be providing.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the Michael Ilya Professional Services Agreement for the pedestrian bridge across Campin Creek and Doc Eldridge Park.
Second.
Discussion? Molly?
Yes, I would just like to remind the council and the people in the audience that this pedestrian bridge has been a topic of conversation for a long time, and the trail that bridges Campin Creek has been a topic of conversation. And as liaison to the Parks Board, I know that our staff has worked very diligently with property owners on both sides of that creek to make sure that they are fully in support of this action. It actually will save us a fair amount of money and make that bridge much more accessible. So I do support this action.
Councilman Shoemaker?
I thank Councilmember Coaston for answering my question. It was, how do we know that the community wants this?
Yes.
Thank you for delivering on that. Are you in the floor?
Councilman Delvar?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. One thing I wanted to point out is this funding for this bridge, as well as tonight's professional services agreement, comes from the dedicated Parks Fund. If I understand correctly, this is one of the best uses you can use for this type of money from the Parks Fund, and I'm glad that we're able to target this money. One thing that I wanted to point out as a clarification for anybody who was paying attention, there was a question that I raised, and I may not have raised it the right way when we were discussing this the last time, but it was with regards to why the business and occupation license was required. I pulled up our code and looked at it, and indeed, it's right there in our city code, and so it sort of answers the question itself. The ironic part about this is that if Mr. Ilya doesn't have a business license, he's going to be, if I understand correctly, paying $300 to the city in order to be able to do a contract with the city, which is kind of ironic that we're paying him to pay us. But such is life. Anyway, I yield the floor.
Motion on the floor is to accept the PSA with Michael Ilya, Engineering and Design of Pedestrian Bridge Across Campin Creek and Doc Eldridge Park. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Bill 120-10, Support of Clark County Regional Planning Grant Application.
Yes, Mayor Protem Russell and some council members. This is a request... Oh, I'm sorry, my mic was not on. This is a request that City Council authorizes the mayor to sign a letter of support for Clark County's application for a HUD 2010 Sustainable Communities Regional Planning Grant, and they'll be using the funds to update the Community Framework Plan, which has not been updated for 20 years. And it's also authorization for in-kind contribution of staff time of up to $5,360. If the grant is awarded, it will require an interlocal agreement. Subsequent to writing this agenda bill, I have learned that RTC is giving $100,000 in in-kind contribution to this project, and it's before the City of Camas Council this evening. The City of Woodland has, it's already gone through their planning commission, I don't know why it goes through their planning commission before their council, but, and their planning commission is in support of it, and they will be giving in-kind contributions as well. And if you read the letter that's written at the back, "The benefits of this grant to the City of Waschuggal is that it will support a consistent regional approach to land use. It furthers our city's comprehensive plan principle to involve our citizens, regional communities, and the private sector in the planning process, and it will provide information regarding the desires and concerns of our citizens through the public outreach element of this process. Therefore, the recommended action is to make a motion to authorize the mayor, sign the letter of support as shown in Exhibit B." And as a side note, there is no RRA funds associated with this grant.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the letter of support that's shown in Exhibit B.
I'll second.
Discussion? Yes.
I realize there has been, we have had discussion about this particular topic, and I know there are some words in here that spark controversy amongst us, and, you know, like words like sustainable, and I can understand that because there, but I would urge my fellow council members to view this, especially in light of the fact that there are no, it is not stimulus funding that is behind this, that we are providing some support for fellow agency. To me, sustainable means...
You can keep doing it.
Conservation. It means doing things the best way that we can with the funding that we have, and planning for the needs of all of our citizens. It's something that we really have to be doing, and looking out long-term vision and long-term range planning. So I would urge my fellow council members to support this action. And I do believe that we are in tough fiscal times, and in tough fiscal times, the challenge is to pull together our entire area. We need to start working together, and I think that will benefit us all. So, thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman?
Okay. Yes, I do indeed have concerns, not for the terms that you mentioned, but for three other terms: HUD, HUD, DOT, and EPA. To me, these are very big and powerful agencies, possibly with some agendas to further. And however, I did meet with Director Boyes last week, and we discussed, you know, this further, and nothing that was out of council. Basically, it was my concerns from the workshop last Monday, and her explaining things a little bit further. And after reconsidering, I'm definitely willing to let this particular letter of support pass to take a look at the interlocal agreement that will come afterwards, and to delve a little bit further into the grant, the processes, the mandates that will come along with it and such. But I think it's important for Waschuggal to be sitting at this table to help with the planning, if only just to make sure that our voice is heard in the planning process, because this is a 20-year plan, and since it's only done every 20 years, we most definitely need a spot at this table and a voice. So if Director Boyes is willing to fit this into her extremely busy schedule, then I will support it at this point.
Yes, Councilwoman Greenly?
I'd like to build a little bit on what Councilmember McDaniel said. The key to what this is, is there's no direct out-of-pocket expense for the city. We provide in-kind contribution, and by doing so, we get to sit at the table where the plans are made for the 2014 Growth Management Act process. That is required by Washington law. So we have a choice. We can either sit at the table and get to have our voice heard, or we can not sit at the table and not have our voice heard. We pretty much did that last time, and we weren't entirely happy with the process, with the result. So this is, this is a, I can't say no cost, because Joanne is a very valuable staff member, and her time is very valuable. But it does let us sit at the table.
Councilmember Delvar?
With regards to the phrase "sit at the table," I would like to tie two points together tonight, and that is, earlier tonight, we heard public comments about what happens when you sit at the table and you have a different voice. My point about this is that sometimes there is very, very, very strong pressure that when you sit at the table, you conform to what you assume everybody else at the table is hoping for. And with, I have strong concerns about the EPA and HUD departments of the government, and with their agendas. And with regrets, I find my, I believe it's best for me to vote no on this tonight, but those are my reasons.
Councilman? Hearing no other discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Others opposed?
No.
Nay. Roll call.
Councilmember Coaston?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
No.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Aye.
Councilmember Delvar?
No.
Councilmember Greenly?
Aye.
And Councilmember Parks?
Aye.
Jennifer, I believe under state law, I have the ability to vote as well. My vote is no. One, two, three, four. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, which is...
So, make clear.
It was 43, and passed.
Thank you.
So moving on to the next agenda, item number four, moving the council minutes down for a minor correction. Councilman Delvar, you're the one that...
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I wanted to correct three things specifically. Under council comments, that's on page two of the August 2nd council minutes, under council comments, it lists council member, but it doesn't credit which council member, and I believe the, there was a third bullet point under council comments, should be Councilmember Russell, and the fourth bullet point should be Councilmember Greenly, if I remember correctly. And request that, so, basically inserting...
Actually, I don't think that's mine.
Okay.
At four.
I can check on that and get that fixed.
Okay, okay, thank you. And with regards, and then at the end of the same section of Councilmember comments, this is a minor thing, but I would request the indulgence of the, my fellow council members. In the second to last comment there, it says, "Councilmember Delvar thanked Mayor Guard for constraints on public comments." I'd request that we substitute the word framework, or a framework, for the word constraints. And request unanimous consent for this amendment.
So moved?
Question? Point of information, please.
Yes.
What was the amendment again?
The amendment was to remove the word constraints and insert the word a frame, or two words, a framework, so that it would read, "To Councilmember Delvar thanked Mayor Guard for a framework on public comments."
Thank you.
Because that's really what my comments were about. I didn't want them to be characterized as interested in constraining public comment.
Don, because this was moved down out of the consent agenda, do we need to take a formal vote on acceptance of those minutes? Okay. Go ahead, guys.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve the revised minutes for the August 2nd council meeting.
Second.
It is a motion on the table to accept the revised minutes for the August 2nd meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned. No kidding.